Good evening, everyone. It's July 17th, 2019, and this is a special meeting for the Lewis Road PRD application. And we'll speak a little bit more about it after we do a roll call and a pledge.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerstein, I believe, is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member Blaney.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
Ma'am, we have a quorum.
Please rise for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, do I need to read? Do we need to read this notice?
Yes, you need to read that.
Two of them?
Yes.
Big one to fill. Is that a second one?
No, I don't know.
Oh.
That's the one you want.
The posting and mail.
Post it. Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Wednesday, July 17th, 2019, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the preliminary application entitled Lewis Road PRD. The application consists of 118 units as eight clubhouse units, 15 village cottages, 53 village lots, 16 village estates, and 26 woodland estates, and 10 workforce housing units on-site, and two workforce housing units off-site on parcels along Old Country Road and within walking distance of the downtown East Quogue. Other project components include a recreational complex, fitness center, community pool and clubhouse, private 18-hole golf course, and other accessory structures, all as on-site amenities for the exclusive use of the site's residents, and 65.46% open space equalling 427.58 acres on a total of 178 assembled tax parcels totaling 588.39 acres of land situated in the CR 200 zoning district, compatible growth area of the Central Pine Barrens overlay district and Aquifer Protection Overlay District located generally north and east of Lewis Road in the vicinity of Spiny Road and extending north to and beyond Sunrise Highway in East Quogue, Suffolk County tax map numbers 900-250-3-1 with additional surrounding tax lots by order of the Planning Board of the town of Southampton. Phil Keith, Secretary. Thank you, Robin. Just a few words, there are some seats in the audience if you need to. You can find one, and also there are four seats up here if you'd like to sit.
Only for those who brought popcorn, though.
Right. There are seats here, so.
And we do have extra chairs in the adjoining room if anybody wants to get a seat.
Okay, so, tonight, the procedure will be the applicant will make a presentation, and probably for about 30 minutes. We have lots of speakers. You see a three-minute time limit, which I never really like, but a bell will go off, and if you would just wrap up your remarks. We ask you to, if someone has said what you are going to say, there really is no need unless you're compelled to, to speak, to repeat that. We do want to give time for everyone to present their remarks. Wayne, I think you can begin if you want. There's a traffic jam at the desk.
So, good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsh Cincig and Bruin on behalf of DLOV Quogue LLC, the owner and applicant of the proposed subdivision. For the record, I want to advise the board, we submitted an affidavit of posting and mailing. I believe your attorneys reviewed that and finds that to be in order. By introduction and procedure, the board indicated what we'd like to do is, since this application was submitted in October, we haven't had the opportunity to make any presentation to this board about what the project is and how it's changed since the pre-application, which you held a public hearing on and adopted a report back in May 24th of 2018. That report being approximately 33 pages, very substantial, and addressed a number of issues. The procedure, what we'd like to do is, I'm going to give a brief summary and overview of where we've been and how we got to this point. Then Chick Voorhees of Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees, our environmental planner, will present the application as it presently exists. Then Paul Grosser, our team hydrologist, will give you some highlights and summary of some of the hydrological issues that have been addressed in this application. And lastly, Ed DeVita, one of the principals of the owners, would like to wrap it up with a comment. As you know, the application is large and substantial, and we're here, like you are, to hear any further public comments. I'd like to make a statement, though, before we begin, and remind the board that this application was submitted in October. We gave you, consented to a 30-day comment on adjournment to review the completeness till December. In December, your staff appeared before you and presented a report indicating that the application was complete, other than some minor mapping items, and that upon their review of the Seeker documents, they believed that the application was complete from a Seeker standpoint, and that nothing arose to a level requiring a supplemental. Notwithstanding that, the Planning Board deemed this application incomplete for the purpose of quote-unquote completing the Seeker review. And thereafter, you engaged in a process of over six months with an outside consultant. All along the way, the applicant had no ability to participate or provide any comments along that way until this date today. We were asked, and we did provide written comments that we ascertained, but it was not based on a discussion with the board in any particular way. That being said, I want to preference that our appearance tonight should not be considered as a waiver, or consent, or acquiescence to the fact that the board was required, once the application, complete application, was submitted, to hold a public hearing within 62 days, and thereafter to take an action in 62 days, in accordance with both your Town Code as well as the state law. That being said, this board is well aware, I've been involved with this application since 2005. Subdivision application was first submitted to this planning board in 2005, and here we are 14 years later, still attempting to provide for a subdivision. I recall the board at that time did not just want to see another cookie-cutter subdivision, and was actually encouraging some diversity in the type of housing and some ingenuity as to the layout and design of the application. As we know, the Town Board implemented a moratorium, and thereafter undertook a generic EIS and a comprehensive plan study that basically recommended, and that's known as East Quogue GIS, came back and adopted recommendations suggesting that the property, portions of our property as well as the region be upzoned to reduce certain density, and as well as to promote a resort-type development with current suggested amenities like a private golf course, so not to create tax ratables in East Quogue School District. I'm not going to belabor our application, both the pre-app, your pre-app report acknowledges the compliance of our application with the comprehensive plan recommendations, and our substantial application, including the draft EIS, the FEIS that was prepared in accordance with the Town Board application, which this board was an involved agency, coordinated agency, as you know, even though the Town Board was looking to adopt a planned development district, the ultimate development of the property was always a subdivision. That's why you were always an involved agency. The end game was always a subdivision with a golf course. So your board was always involved, you commented during the process, and you participated, and this was all recognized in your pre-app report and the process for Seeker. Notwithstanding that the staff recommended that there was no further documents needed from a Seeker standpoint, we observed this board go through a six-month process with your consultants, and that terminated in June of 27th with a report by your consultants, which was adopted by this board, that came to the same conclusion that your staff did six months earlier, which was there's no further information needed, and that the application didn't arise for the need of a supplemental EIS. That being said, we, the pre-application, your report, we went back. As you recall, one of the substantial questions was the use of the property with an accessory golf course. And being that that was a condition this board had not seen previously, you asked that the building inspector seek an interpretation at the zoning board of appeals. The building inspector made that application, and thereafter, the zoning board of appeals, after hearing all parties, rendered a decision and found that the proposed golf course as an accessory use to 118 lots on 600 acres was indeed a customary accessory use and appropriate, and gives you the basis to proceed in this application as such. Moreover, the pre-application identified a question that was raised during the pre-application. We want to remind you, it was your board's suggestion, even though it wouldn't be required by Health Department regulations, that sewage treatment be by virtue of a sewage treatment plant. We offered that again at the pre-application stage. That was always in our preliminary application and continues to be part of that. Just want to remind you, and that will be something that will be discussed. So at this point, what I'd like to do is have Chick Voorhees sort of present the application for you and identify a lot of the highlights. I know the board and the staff has taken a lot of time to dig into the application itself in details, and you will continue to do that to the point where you will be required to adopt your own finding statement under Seeker and take an action on the preliminary plan. One of the things that we expect is this board to hear all the comments tonight, and as is customary, you'll close the hearing, and there'll be an opportunity for written comments, and at that period, we'd like to provide the board with a written submission that addresses a number of questions, including some of the questions that were left unanswered by your consultant, which were not related to whether a supplement was required, but it had to do with the substance of the application as opposed to whether or not a supplement was needed. We will and expect that opportunity to provide you with that information. So without further ado, I want to let Chick do that, and we'd like to hear public comments.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Chick Voorhees of Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees. I've spoken before you many times and have expressed my qualifications, education, and 40 years plus of experience. As you know, I'm very familiar with this project, this site dating back to 2005. I was also the primary author on the environmental impact statement that proceeded before the Town Board for their review under Seeker. There are a number of submissions that you have as part of the file and the record. There's full subdivision plans. There is an architectural plan package set that identifies the features of the clubhouse area, which have been modified and I'll speak of briefly. As Wayne said, there's the zoning board determination on the recreational amenity. You have the Seeker compliance analysis that we prepared, along with the supplement, as well as the consultant's review of that dated June 27th. And then, of course, the DEIS and FEIS and findings statement of the Town Board are part of the record. All that is before you as part of this project. The overall project is a resort community that is consistent with the intent of the town, as embodied in the comprehensive plan and the East Quogue Land Use Plan. The project is consistent with the pre-application report adopted by you on May 24th, 2018. As noted, subdivision plans were prepared and submitted in November. These are consistent with the pre-app report and the Seeker findings on the EIS review from the Town Board, with a few minor changes, all of which improved the project. The project will include the golf course amenity, but it's part of the subdivision and is not a membership course for outside members, as was proposed before the Town Board. The project is also designed to be consistent with all of the requirements of the town of Southampton Pine Barrens Overlay District, as well as the Central Pine Barrens Comprehensive Land Use Plan. After the original submission, the plan was further evaluated to ensure that 65% contiguous open space is provided outside of the basic development area. This plan shows that the best. I'll talk a little bit about the design and refer to that again. During this process, the plan was also modified to reduce the size, scope, and mass of the community building area to be more in keeping with the subdivision that was proposed. Based on these submissions, this board found that the project is consistent with the EIS record and findings statement, and that no further Seeker review is required, other than the adoption of a findings statement by this board, and that was based on your consultant's report and your finding from June 27th. From a design standpoint, the subdivision supports the preservation of natural vegetation in large unbroken blocks that allow contiguous open spaces to be established with adjacent parcels, which mostly include public lands. We presented many maps as part of the application. We have a very simple portrayal today of the area surrounding the site, the boundaries of the proposed project, and in this one, we have superimposed the proposed project within that area. You can see that the eastern roughly 100 acres of the Parlato property is totally preserved intact. The northern 90 or so acres north of Sunrise Highway in the core preservation area is preserved in total. 1,000 feet south of Sunrise Highway is the core preservation area boundary, and you can see that there is significant open space throughout the project. As I said, the basic development configuration conforms to the 65%, which your Aquifer Protection Overlay District speaks to. I just read the Pine Barrens standard with respect to unfragmented open space, and this aligns completely with off-site open space lands, allowing for preservation of lands in alignment with adjacent parcels. The design also prioritizes the preservation of native Pine Barrens vegetation to the maximum extent practicable by utilizing existing cleared areas for the majority of development. And you can see on that diagram, the central portions of the site have been cleared. There are a number of wide trails that the site had been used by dirt bikes and ATVs, and for many years now, we've been looking at the design and refining it to make sure that we conform to topography, utilize existing cleared areas to the maximum extent, and essentially conform to those requirements of the Pine Barrens Comprehensive Land Use The applicable clearing limit here is 28%. That means that 72% is retained natural open space, and we have designed that so that's existing natural vegetation, in keeping with the Pine Barrens requirements. The project will conform to this by preserving 427.58 acres, which is 72.67% open space on the overall 588.39 acre parcel. As I said, that development is within the 35% area. 65% is outside that development bubble area, but there is significant open space within those areas that will also be retained, and that provides conformance with the APOD and the CLUP. It is important to note that the June 27th Seeker compliance review by your consultant, they found that the applicant has attempted to maximize contiguous open space, contiguous natural open space is the exact wording. With respect to slopes, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan in the town has a guideline that does not prohibit construction on slopes greater than 10%, but the guideline urges that proper erosion control measures and proper stabilization plans be demonstrated. We have that in the plan package. As confirmed by the town's findings, the layout of the Hills PDD, and by extension, this Lewis Road PRD conforms. There's also a land use plan, Comprehensive Land Use Plan Standard for fertilizer-dependent vegetation. It limits it to 15% of the overall property. That would be 88.26 acres total, and the project will be in conformance with this requirement. There's also a 2.5 milligram per liter guideline that would apply as we proceed through further review. This project has been demonstrated consistently to be less than one milligram per liter of nitrogen in recharge, based on mass balance methods that have been used and time-tested through prior reviews and precedent. That does not consider the fertigation, which I will speak about, and Dr. Grosser will speak about in even more detail. So these are really the key standards and guidelines that we are looking at. These have been reviewed in the environmental impact statement, in the Seeker compliance document from early this year, and this evaluation has demonstrated that the project conforms to all applicable requirements of the project and is in complete compliance with the town's Pine Barrens Overlay District and the Pine Barrens Plan. Just in terms of key elements of the project, the project will feature all of the on-site benefits and mitigation measures that were provided for in the EIS for the Hills. This includes use of groundwater with elevated nitrogen for irrigation. The Town Board and scientists who reviewed the DEIS found this to be a net negative nitrogen project, based on that analysis, and that was a feature of the project. This technology is common, and will be discussed further by my colleague, Paul. The Integrated Turf Health Management Plan that was reviewed by Dr. Marty Petrovic for the Town Board will be implemented in connection with this project, exactly the same as what you've done before for Sabonic and Golf at the Bridge. The greens will be lined for water protection, and this together with the ITHMP and fertigation will ensure that the project has a net negative nitrogen load. There will be a cap of no more than two pounds per thousand square feet of fertilizer nitrogen per year. This is very restrictive, but it is a best management practice to ensure that there's no impact, and it will be implemented as part of this project. A tertiary sewage treatment plant will be constructed for nitrogen removal, and will remove nitrogen with a discharge of well under 10 milligrams per liter. This is not required to meet Health Department standards, but is proposed by the applicant to further reduce nitrogen load. There will be no children from this project that will attend the East Quogue School District. In addition, the Lewis Road PRD will generate substantial tax revenue to the town and other taxing jurisdictions, including the East Quogue School District. These numbers were updated for the revised subdivision project without a membership golf course, and a total of nearly $7.5 million in total taxes per year is expected, with over $5.5 million per year allotted to the schools based on the tax bill breakdown. This will result in savings to the taxpayers in the school district. And again, all of this was vetted and described in detail in the EIS, and all updates were consistent with the methodologies that we worked through with the assessor and tax receiver. The PRD will generate hundreds of construction jobs and approximately 100 job equivalents during annual operations. This will have a significant beneficial ripple effect on the local and regional economy. The project will provide 12 workforce housing units for the benefit of the town. We want to hear from the public, so I'm just going to summarize by saying that the Lewis Road PRD has been thoroughly vetted through an EIS for a nearly identical project, resulting in the project now before you, and refined, to be even better, that on balance, has less impact than the original Hills project. This vetting included the EIS, a pre-application process, Seeker compliance review process, and now this subdivision hearing. No significant adverse impacts are expected, based on the Seeker review that this board completed, based on the EIS record before the Town Board, and also before you. Concerns over potential impacts of the project are unfounded. The project is the most environmentally sensitive project ever to come before this board. Based on these factors, I urge you to approve the preliminary subdivision, so that this can proceed to final subdivision review. Thank you, and I'd be happy to try and address any questions you may have.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Paul Grosser with PW Grosser Consulting. I've got a PhD in civil engineering, and I'm a professional engineer and professional geologist. My role here tonight is to present to you this concept of fertigation and how we're essentially making this project nitrogen-negative, and it's one of the most unique and beneficial aspects of the project. This is an aerial photo with the project overlaying on it. You can see the project in here, and this is the Sandy Gravel Mine and the farm fields and Pine Barrens areas up to the north. As part of the EIS, we took groundwater samples in different areas around the project, okay? And we found, as expected, in the undisturbed areas, nitrogen was very, very low, and even in much of the project area, nitrogen was very low. But we discovered that down gradient, the groundwater flow is in this direction, towards Wisa Creek, and down gradient of those farm fields, we found very high nitrogen concentrations in the groundwater. Suffolk County Water Authority has a well field there that's restricted in use because of high nitrogen. They can only blend it with existing well, and we found concentrations under 29 milligrams per liter. Drinking water standard is 10, okay? And we're looking to get down to less than two, okay? And as part of the investigation, we came across that experience with the other golf courses with Bridge and Sabonic, proper techniques as far as turf management and application of fertilizers, you can get about 90% removal of the nitrogen that's applied to the golf course, okay? So you limit the amount of nitrogen you put on the golf course to the appropriate amount. Turf takes up 90% of it, and about 10% reaches through. So what we're doing here is using this high nitrogen groundwater to essentially fertilize the golf course. So we're recycling that contaminated water, putting it on the golf course. The turf removes 90% of that nitrogen, okay? And that's how we get to this net negative nitrogen. Literally, we're removing about a ton per year of nitrogen from the groundwater in the irrigation water, okay? And then that offsets other nitrogen loads from the sewage treatment plant and from limited additional fertilization that's required, okay? So we're getting about negative 1,000 pounds per year of nitrogen, and that's nitrogen that would not be going to Wisa Creek and Shinnacock Bay. So this real key aspect to this project, we vetted this with Dr. So this real key aspect to this project, we vetted this with Dr. Petrovic, okay? The turf management guy, person that the town uses and has been instrumental with the Bridge and Sabonic. He, yeah, we were talking, is it ninety-five percent removal or is it ninety percent removal? Our analysis, we were conservative and said it's ninety percent removal. We vetted this with Dr. Gobler, and he understands the concept we're talking about and has agreed to what we had in the EIS. So like I said, this is a key aspect to it, huge benefit that you would not get anyplace else, and it helps the bay, it helps us do a good job of maintaining the golf course as well. Is that, like, Danielle, for questions? And Ed's gonna take it from here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening. I'm Ed Javita. I'm a partner with Discovery Land Company, and I've been working on this project since Discovery first got involved. First off, I'd like to start by thanking the board members for your service to the community, for your commitment to high-quality planning, which is evidenced by the way that you study the plans and look at it, and I see that in the dialogue, and for upholding the codes and rules of our town with fairness and integrity and respect for property owners' rights. We love this town. We are really looking forward to making this the best project ever in East Quogue. We've been enduringly patient. I think we've demonstrated that in pursuit of our project authorizations, and we look forward to making a step forward today. We're proud and happy to be here. We first met with members of the town board and the planning department back in 2013. I went back and looked at my notes, and it's been, it's been an enjoyable process in, from the perspective of, I mean, a lot of people might not, not understand that, but the perspective of coming in, hearing what the town, the town's ideas were for this property, getting some inspiration about the type of project that was applicable, especially with respect to the comprehensive plan, and then putting together a solid team of scientists and engineers and experts to try to address the challenge and come up with a plan. It's been, it's been a long process, but it's been rewarding, and we feel good about making that progress. We had, we've had over a hundred meetings throughout the, the community. You know, this includes groups like the Chamber of Commerce, the CAC, the Civics, the Pine Barrens Society, the Group for the East End, the school boards multiple times, local business owners, foundations, many, many more. And each, each meeting, we listened and tried to understand, you know, what are the concerns? What are the challenges? And we went back with our team to try to address those challenges and really make a difference, and it's been a continuous process of refinement. So, you know, a comment, just a highlight on, on a few of the key things that we're particularly proud of, Paul was talking about how the project is designed to improve water quality. Chick pointed out that, that we'll be preserving close to seventy-three percent total property, and the, the development inclusive of the golf course and all of the buildings is inside of a bubble of less than thirty-five percent of the land, so there's a sixty-five percent pure preserved area that's part of our proposal. We'll operate seasonally in the summer. We're creating jobs and support the local economy. We're protecting the school and the taxpayers because we're not putting children into the school district, but we're still paying taxes. We're cleaning up the environmental damage from before our time. For those of you that have been up on the site, includes trash dumping, damage from motorcycle race courses that were, were built, fire damage, as well as the, the one aspect that Paul described of removing nitrogen that's accumulated in the aquifer over the years from various sources. So I can say confidently and with absolute resolve that Discovery Land Company is fully committed, stronger than ever, to seeing this project through to fruition. We look forward to being a great neighbor. We look forward to being a contributing member of the community. And in closing, I have to thank the wonderful people of East Quogue and the citizens of the town that have been supportive and been contributors and helped us come to this point in the process, and as well as thanking the board for considering our application. We look forward to your feedback and a, and a timely process. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Okay, so that's it for the presentation. We now have, if anybody else has some cards, we have thirty-three speakers, so I'm asking that you try to keep it brief, succinct, to the point, not repeat what someone else has said. All of your comments will be recorded and understood. So I'm just going to go down in order of how they were collected. So Bob DeLuca from the Group for the East End is number one.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. My name is Bob DeLuca, and I serve as president of Group for the East End. We've been engaged in the review of this and prior proposals on this site for the last five years, and as many of you know, I've been involved in the professional review of development proposals in this town for the last thirty-four years. Tonight, it's clear to us, based on your own consultant's reporting, that many outstanding questions remain to be answered about this proposal, and we strongly encourage your full attention to all of these matters as you proceed. I'll be submitting more detailed written comments while using my time tonight to make the following general statement. The Lewis Road planned residential development is the largest PRD reviewed in this town in decades, and it is located in the town's most sensitive watershed protection area. Unfortunately, some of the water in this area has already been compromised against the basic goals of the town's comprehensive planning. As such, it is imperative that the planning board diligently review this proposal through the criteria and policy objectives of the site's restrictive R-200 and aquifer protection overlay zoning classifications, as well as the town's open space law, which permits PRDs primarily for the purpose of increased natural resource protection, not necessarily for the development of golf courses or country clubs. The planning board's responsibility, responsibilities are particularly important to this review because the project proposes an unusual number of structures and uses, most notably the eighteen-hole golf course and thousands of square feet of constructed recreational buildings, mixed-use buildings, and constructed amenities, which have never been such an extensive part of any PRD application in the town that I can recall reviewing or you approving. It's also noteworthy that the majority of these additional buildings were not part of the now contested before the court zoning board of appeals decision that launched this latest proposal. In fact, that decision, if you look at it, and I know you will, only provided for an accessory golf course use with some related maintenance, irrigation, and comfort structures. So the critical decisions regarding the project's substantial non-residential construction have now come right back to the planning board, and as such, you must carefully weigh what the zoning legally allows. You must also be mindful that this project is no longer a mixed-use planned development district, and that the underlying goals of the planned development district law differ substantially from the stringent environmental zoning provisions that must now be followed by the planning board under its existing zoning and the open space law. Unfortunately, development has long allowed, has long been allowed to proceed in Southampton Town, based on assurances of adequate protection of natural resources, especially water was always in place. However, today we know that past and recent development has undeniably contributed to declining water quality that now threatens both our drinking water and our surface water resources. These impacts can no longer be viewed as just externalities to be absorbed by the public, but rather they are documented threat to our health, our local economy, our coastal ecosystems, and our way of life, which must be addressed. So as this review continues, it's essential that you fully investigate, first, the potential nitrogen contamination related to this project, especially with respect to dispersion and hotspots associated with where this development is going to be located on the property. Page twenty-two of your consultant's report says specifically, and this is them, not me saying this, that, that the applicant's inputs to nitrogen loading were not sufficiently conservative. They ask you to look at a dispersion model, which I hope that you will. The fertigation issue is also something that requires more attention. My concern is that down gradient from agricultural land in addition to high nitrogen, which the applicant has referred to, you also have pesticides and other agricultural chemicals that you all want to know about before you start moving that groundwater onto a golf course. Finally, compliance with the town's open space law, as well as compliance with the dimensional regulations and the use requirements of the R-200 zone. As the planning board is vested with substantial discretionary authority over town zoning, the PRD review process, and the State Environmental Quality Review Act, we pray that you will demand the most stringent environmental design and mitigation measures for any action on this site, not just so things don't get worse, but so things can actually begin to improve. I thank you very much for your time, and we would ask that the record be held open by this board until you have sufficient information for you to review and for the public to review based on your consultant's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is William Hughes.
Good evening. I'm William Hughes, citizen of the town of Southampton. I consider myself a tree hugger, a conservationist my entire life, but I think we have to take a serious look at what is good commerce and what is not good commerce, what is allowed as of right and this proposal by the Lewis Road people. When I look at good commerce and bad commerce, I think about the caveman kicking around rocks. Sports, good sports, I think it's good commerce. I think it's good for the town of Southampton. I think of other things that go on in, I'm not saying the town of Southampton, but across the world where casinos come in, tax revenue, and it's very, very desirable to get that money, maybe, maybe growing cannabis and things like that. Quite frankly, I'm not really in favor of that because I don't think it's the sustainable type of commerce that we need in the town of Southampton. If we look at some of the quality courses we have here, the Bridge, Sabonic, National, Shinnecock Hills, and what it does for the town of Southampton is all positive. It's positive, good things. I'm not a geologist and all the other, I don't know the science, but I listen to it. And I believe what I'm being told. The facts are there. I urge you, the board, to approve this application and move it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next is Brian Timman.
Timman.
Timman, West Hampton Beach Village Board.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to read a letter on behalf of the West Hampton Beach Village Board, the four trustees and the mayor who couldn't be here tonight. Dear members of the planning board, as board members for the village of West Hampton Beach, we are intimately familiar with the challenges of making difficult decisions. Our positions in public service are often called thankless jobs, therefore we envy your service to the community. We realize the complexity of the current PRD proposal under your review. We've watched the progress of it with great interest as our village is very closely tied with the East Quogue community socially, economically, and environmentally. We have much admiration for the work you've done to ensure that every aspect of the project is vetted and scrutinized. For the past several years, our board has worked in unison, together with great focus and tireless diligence, to bring long-awaited infrastructure improvements to our village, which we are proud to say have been accomplished by teamwork, both within our municipality and beyond on the state, county, and town level. During this time, we have had nothing but positive dealings with Discovery Land Company at their Dune Deck property, which is within our village. We have always, they have always conducted themselves in a professional and cooperative manner, often going above and beyond the requirements, and they have been an outstanding partner and have become a wonderful asset to our community. Signed, Village Board, Mayor Moore, four Village trustees. And on a personal note, I would like to emphasize what I just said, and also as a personal experience with Discovery Land Company, who I am a proud employee of, that Discovery does go above and beyond, and I've looked at their other properties. I've carefully scrutinized their environmental record elsewhere. It's stellar, and Bob DeLuca made a very good point. He said, "This should be held to the most stringent environmental standards." I couldn't agree with that more, and I have full confidence in Discovery's ability and your ability to hold them to those standards and for them to comply with those standards, again, above and beyond. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Heather Gergenti, is it?
Gergenti.
Gergenti, please. And then Roy Weins will be after that, so.
Hello, everyone. I do want to preface reading these letters that I'm about to read by saying that they're letters from real people who were not able to make it here tonight. There's a lot of people that we reached out to asking, you know, for their honest opinion, and all these letters should be taken as seriously as if the person who wrote them was here tonight.
And you'll be able to put them into the record, so?
Yeah, we have several.
Okay.
We collected, so. To the members of the Southampton Planning Board, I purchased a house in East Quogue this past year, and I'm urging the planning board to support the Hills' application for a long-term benefit of my new town. The overriding basis on which this decision should be made is the environmental impact, and this clearly is the least impactful project. The Hills will be developed with state-of-the-art sewage treatment plant and controlled and importantly monitored water, limited fertilizer, farm water filtered, and recycled for irrigation, none of which uncontrolled conventional housing will offer. Due to its seasonality and restrictions on occupancy, the traffic will be reduced and the school burden nonexistent. As a homeowner, I will benefit from a financially stronger hamlet that will have its tax base increased and not offset by expenses resulting from an increase in the student population. Please protect and improve the environment, vote in support of the Hills. Sincerely, Eileen Cornacchia, East Quogue. I am a homeowner in East Quogue, and I support the Discovery Project. East Quogue has lost a lot of great things by the delay and change in the permitting process. The beneficial impact on this community is enormous with a very soft footprint. Please push this forward. Best, Ambrose Carr, homeowner, East Quogue. And lastly, as you know, Ally and I have a home at Four Walker Court in East Quogue. I am writing to you to voice our full support for Discovery Land's proposed development in East Quogue. To be honest, I think it is absurd that the project has been held up for so long by people who don't live in East Quogue. Discovery has a long history of being a generous member of the communities in which it has developments. The projects are well-done, create good jobs, and bring substantial revenue to the community. Peter and Ally Imber, East Quogue.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Roy Weins, and I live in Southampton. I've spent a lifetime growing up around the Southampton Town Planning Board. My, I watched my grandfather, while I was a child, sit on this board many years as the chairman. I even spent time sitting on this board myself as a rotary student in high school, learning the procedures and how you operate. I've been following this board since, for the past twenty-six years, as a local builder, and have a lot of admiration for what you go through and for your service. I can understand the pressure the board feels from this application, but the pressure at this point is self-inflicted. This project is very simple. Once the zoning board determined that the golf course is a permissible use, the application has become as of right. It's formality at this point, which has dragged on much too long, and the board needs to finalize this and approve this application. I've had the privilege of working with the owners of this property, Discovery Land Company, for the past five years on their project in West Hampton, the Dune Deck. I can personally tell you that this company has gone above and beyond when it comes to the quality, its concern about the neighbors, and especially the environment. I have worked for numerous developers and private owners over the years who talk a good game, but when it comes down to the cost, they usually go the easy road. That's not the way this company works. Discovery doesn't spare the expense. They make sure that they have the environment and all the, their neighbors' concerns first. These good people have been put through and made to jump through many hoops, and they've done everything that anybody has asked. I implore all of you to do your job on this board and approve this application.
Thank you.
Hi. I've been asked to read a couple of letters from local residents who couldn't be here tonight, and I do hope to take them seriously, or as seriously as if they were here. Danny Manning wrote this, and his wife, Mary Ellen, concurred. I live on Spinney Road, and as a very interested party, I have followed all versions of this project since Discovery first applied. While I understand the need for thorough evaluation of development, it has perplexed me from day one why their continued willingness to accommodate and agree to essentially all that they were asked for and more has been thwarted. that they were asked for and more has been thwarted and shot down by the silent minority. Throughout the PVD process, it was clear as day that the majority of the public wanted the proposed project. That was a missed opportunity. Please do not let that travesty be repeated. This is nothing short of a great opportunity for the entire community. Unfortunately, you are now able to put an end to this nonsense. I trust you will make the obvious decision. Thank you. Patty and Derek Greco of West Hampton Beach wrote, "What's being discussed is a residential development with golf as a recreational amenity. Massive amounts of land preserved, highest standards of turf management, seasonal occupancy, tax revenue, creation of jobs both short and long term, and a developer that has a proven track record worldwide. This property isn't going to get anything better than that." Frank Gee Mulvey and Rachel Comer of West Hampton wrote, "I will be short and sweet so as not to waste anyone's time. This project has been dragged through the mud for too long. There are no more boards or consultants left to go through this application. Please allow it to proceed." And Frank Marticello of Spionk wrote, "I can't believe this is still going on. I feel like I live in crazy town, USA." On a personal note, I too know Discovery Land Company very well, and they are absolutely the best in the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Amper, Long Island Pine Barrens Society.
My name is Richard Amper. I'm Executive Director of the Long Island Pine Barrens Society, and we've been trying to protect this ecosystem for the better part of 40 years, and allowed sensible development to occur that wasn't harmful and objected where we thought the projects were dangerous and inconsistent with our desire to protect water and preserve open space. You heard even tonight, the applicant continues to argue that their plan is consistent with the Pine Barrens Protection Act and the associated comprehensive land use plan. In fact, the applicant has not cooperated with the Pine Barrens Commission, and the project has not been reviewed by the Commission at all. That is now scheduled to occur in the next 60 days. It is unclear that the premises on which the planning board based its findings is accurate. The consultants should look at the board, revisit the basis by which certain environmental impacts were estimated, and decide whether you agree or disagree once you've satisfied yourself that you're using the right numbers. We believe that the planning board should use the time before action on the project for further review, that the proposed project constitutes a development of regional significance under the Pine Barrens Act, and that the town board's rejection of a very similar development project was a sound and environmentally responsible determination that should guide this planning board's decision. This is a very big project. It's taken a long time. That's because it has, it has the potential to be very damaging to existing water supplies and to the Pine Barrens ecosystem. We're not here to complain or to be negative. We're simply trying to protect what is arguably the most important natural resource this town is possessed of. Use the time that you have to review the information that has come in front of you, to seek out additional information from any source where it's available. The decision you make on this will affect a lot of people and a very special place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Marr, Concerned Citizens of Quogue.
I live in the village of Quogue, so as far as planning boards or concern in zoning, I do live in crazy town, so I appreciate you taking some time and listening to what I have to say. I have no idea what a seeker report is. I don't know what an environmental study looks like, but I've lived in the village of Quogue for most of my life, for more than 40 years. I'm also in the golf business, the golf industry, though I have no relation or impact as far as Discovery Land is concerned. One thing I can tell you is that Discovery Land manages their properties and burnishes the reputations of the communities that they're in better than any other land development company or golf company that I've ever come across. I happened to work for a development company for a brief period of time that would like to think of themselves as a, as a competitor of Discovery Land, and I've broadcast hundreds of tournaments from locations that would like to consider themselves on par with Discovery Land projects. I can tell you now that there are no competitors as far as Discovery Land is concerned and the quality of business, and the fact that they exceed any expectations in any community that I've ever seen them in. And I've been to a number of Discovery Land properties. My uncle, James Davidson, founded the group for the South Fork, who was one of the founders as well. He also founded the Hampton Jitney in an effort to try and remove as many cars as he possibly could from the roads coming out here to the East End. So I understand what it means to try and look at the environmental impact here on the East End. I live on the water in Quogue, so any kind of runoff or any kind of impact to the water will impact me personally. I trust that Discovery Land will do what they need to do to make sure that the environment is not only protected, but the community of East Quogue is burnished, that there are possibilities for the young people in East Quogue to get jobs. And if you get a job at Discovery Land in the golf business, it's like an advanced degree. You can go almost anywhere you want afterwards. That's how good they are in what they do. I don't know if that's my three minutes, but I'm just going to go on a little bit further. I don't know, obviously, how you're going to vote. Clearly, we don't know that. But if you do, and I'm hopeful that you will approve this project, I know you'll be able to look back on that day and know that is the day that you made East Quogue a better place to live and a better place to do business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrew Lynch.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Lynch. I am a fourth-generation resident of Quogue and a local business owner. I have been active in multiple aquaculture efforts in and around the Quogue area to introduce oysters. I grew up on the water there. I've seen firsthand the degradation over the years in our water quality. Many people can see that the water quality has been declining. Fewer people are able to do something about it. I believe that this project combines responsible development along with the ability to potentially improve a pre-existing nitrogen pollution situation on Lewis Road, not just the water that's there currently that could be used to help with the golf course, but all the water that continues to flow through that property that could potentially be pulled up by this fertigation process. I have no affiliation with Discovery. I'm not a golfer, but I believe that this project has languished for too long, and I support it, and I believe it should go forward.
Thank you. Silas Anthony, West Hampton Beach.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank this board for taking the time to vet this project for the last year. I know it fell in your lap about a year ago, and you guys have taken your time. You gave it over to the zoning board. They took their time. They vetted it. They approved it. You guys hired an outside consultant to do the environmental studies. He took his time. He's deemed it complete. So I think now it has come to the time to follow what they've done. You've done your due diligence. It's time to approve this. I think it's time. I understand that there's opposition that will shake their head and just never understand it, but Discovery is going to be a great neighbor. And I just wanted to say one thing about a great organization, the group for the East End. But I saw in the paper that they had their fundraiser at a golf course that I think they probably oppose, the bridge. And then I read an op-ed saying that they have come to a compromise with them on that project, and they've come to a decision that basically it's a, it's a good project for the area. So perhaps maybe now it's time for them to compromise with Discovery and perhaps meet in the middle and move on and do something good for the community of East Quogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Adam Turcchinian?
Aaron Turcchinian.
Turcchinian.
Turcchinian. And Laura Fabrizio, Maritius Bay Project. Are they here? He's coming.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is Aaron Turcchinian from West Hampton Beach. I'm here with my co-founder of the Maritius Bay Project, Laura Fabrizio. And you're going to hear from a lot of experts tonight on what their opinion is for and against a particular project. We're here this evening to tell you that the Maritius Bay Project is a 501(c)(3), formed about five years ago to restore Maritius Bay one oyster at a time. And for the last three years, the Discovery people have been our partners in an oyster farm on Maritius Bay. They've been terrific neighbors, very responsible, and they're working with us to restore Maritius Bay. And so we just came here tonight to tell you, they're good neighbors, they've done a great job, and they're supporting the restoration of our Maritius Bay environment. So for that, we say thank you very much and good evening.
Thank you. Kristin Kepner. Kristin Kepner. She left, okay. Marcus Stinchey.
Good evening. Chair and members of the planning board, my name is Marcus Stinchey. I had to keep taking notes tonight, but hopefully I stay within my three minutes here because I'm, I'm really frustrated at this whole process. I was born and raised in West Hampton Beach. I built my home in East Quogue 15 years ago, sort of around the time that you guys started your project, although I got to build at least one house. I worked in the, in the political arena, and I mention this just for a little bit of background of who I am. For 20 years in the town of Southampton, I was the chairman for five, five and a half. I was a member of the Southampton Town Conservation Board. I have no relationship with Discovery, have never worked for them, never benefited from them or their affiliates. Again, you know, very frustrated as a lifelong resident of the town that this has been dragged on and how they've been treated. I live on Lewis Road and I'm a neighbor of the proposed Hills project. The group for the East End brings up a good point of how tainted the site is. I have an irrigation wall on my property that's over 130 feet deep because the first two aquifers are contaminated. I think we should commend Discovery for stepping up and being so willing to clean up the site and reducing the nitrogen. So, you know, we hear about preserving and, and the, the aquifer and the water, that it's tainted. You can just look at Suffolk County Water Authority, what's going on? From the airport, this is all coming down Lewis Road. All the farms, all the nitrogen that comes off the farms, that's where it's all going into drinking water. There's, there's a number of preservations. One's from change, and one is in combination with protecting our future. There's a balance, and we see that in the Hills project. Preservation of our future, preserving our quality of life, not overburdening our schools, police, and EMS, allowing development but in a responsible and reasonable way. Discovery Land is a proven leader in upscale development that will provide a positive change to our growing community. Growth at a reasonable rate is not only necessary but healthy. You can see what's been done at Dune Deck and West Hampton Beach, how the project was built, their partnership with the village in doing the right thing. Their project not only was responsible, but they've become a steward and an asset to the community. That's one benefit that we've seen dragging this project on, have they stayed involved in the community, have they tried to help, have they been involved with Maritius Bay Project, the schools, numerous projects that they've been involved in, stayed involved with. The benefits of the current proposal to, proposed project to the community by far outweigh any negative impacts. Preservation of protect, and protecting over 400 acres of property is responsible and a reasonable plan. I ask the planning board to be swift in your decision and move to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Greenblatt.
Good evening. I am here before you as a resident of East Quogue. I have no other interests either side of this project. And I've maintained a home there for over 10 years now. And it is my plan to maintain my home in East Quogue for the rest of my life, which I hope is a very long time. And I say that because I care greatly about the long-term health and economic vitality of East Quogue. And it is not clear to me at all how much many of the objectors who are not residents of East Quogue share that focus or concern. While I recognize these developments have environmental consequences, I believe based upon everything that I have read, that Discovery Land is taking extraordinary steps to meet and exceed the best standards and practices. I have spent a substantial amount of time, which is all I can do, researching Discovery Land and all of their projects. And I am convinced that they would be a great neighbor for me in East Quogue for a very, very long time. And I'm also convinced that their presence would improve real estate values, which again, for long-term vitality, results in higher tax revenues, which benefits to all. I've watched the financial issues in East Quogue get worse over the last five years as I've intended many of the school board budget hearings, and I've heard how difficult it is for them to meet their needs. Unfortunately, that results in laying off teachers, special ed teachers, or issues for, for the students and the kids who live in East Quogue. And I recognize thus, it may not be a concern of the objectors and the environmentalists, but it's a tremendous concern to maintain the health and long-term benefit of the community. So I hope most importantly, when you consider this application, you particularly focus on the residents who are most affected by their presence and the fact that giving, this is, to me, is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really benefit East Quogue for its long-term health and well-being. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Peter Sartorius.
Good evening. My name is Peter Sartorius. I'm a longtime resident of Quogue. I've served as mayor for nearly 10 years now, although I'm speaking for myself only now and not for the, not for the government. I'm in favor of this project. I believe that many residents of Quogue are in favor of the project as well. You've heard from a few of them tonight. My reasons are mainly twofold. The benefits that the project is going to give to our neighbors in East Quogue, and I think we're all an integrated area, particularly the benefits, tax benefits to the East Quogue School District. And secondly, the reputation and standing of Discovery Land Company. I think that it is a great opportunity to have such a reputable developer come to East Quogue with a project like this. They have every incentive to perform in a manner that enhances their reputation even further. The stumbling block seems to be the golf course. But I've been to nearly every hearing on this project, and all of them before the, the town board. In, in that whole process, I didn't hear any actual evidence that indicated that the golf course would have a harmful effect. In fact, the evidence, as you've heard tonight, in part, was totally to the contrary. I think this, this project has been studied to death, and I really hope that you will go forward and make a decision on this project so that they can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, can't quite make this out. Deitch? Yes.
Thank you. My name's Paul Deitchi. I am a resident of Quogue. And my concern is climate change. And my conclusion is the world needs, does not need more luxury golf courses. It needs to plant more trees and do a lot of other things. So the management of Discovery Land Company, my hope is that you would do something very positive for humanity and accept an offer you had for preservation. I think you mentioned already tonight that you're, and I appreciate you're focusing on preserving land where possible, but it's not enough versus all the other activities which would occur. So I guess this weekend, I'm told we're going to have extraordinary heat. Maybe that's going to be a reminder of what's going on sadly. And forgive me for saying tragically, we don't have leadership from the White House. Thank you.
Thank you. Tommy Beneter, is it, or?
Yeah.
Is it Beneter?
Beneter.
Beneter.
Good evening. I'm Tommy Beneter from West Hampton. I'd like to thank the planning board for their tireless work and for their due diligence. You have obviously done your homework, and I strongly urge you to close this public hearing. hearing and allow this application to proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Billy Krytsek?
Billy Krytsek Jr. Thank you very much for the Planning Board, for your time. I would just like to say that I think we're very blessed, excuse me, to have such a, you know, reputable developer coming into our community. I've been a resident out here for almost 40 years, and I really firmly believe that we're very blessed to have them come in. Their reputation speaks for itself, for themselves. The environmental issues, they take care of. I've been to over 20 meetings out here, and they've done all their due-dilly to get this approved. And I don't understand what the problem is, to be honest with you. And I'm just very happy to know them. I hope that you vote yes for the application, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Joe Comer?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Comer, but most people know me as Jock Comer. I've been a resident of Southampton Town and a teacher in Southampton Town for over 31 years, and currently reside in Southampton Town. I've watched this whole project for many years, and as a teacher, it was useful to use it as an example of sustainability. And I say that because sustainability is a difficult concept to teach to anyone, much less to high school students. But one of the things that was most notably involved was not just the environmental quality and the environmental quality that's necessary to exemplify sustainability, but also the economics involved. It has to work for people within the context of government and of the town. It also has to fundamentally work for people, that is, work for the people within East Quogue, not just traffic patterns, not just the schools, but it has to actually benefit the community. It was my conclusion some time ago, quite some time ago actually, that this project was sustainable, at least in terms of what we were trying to demonstrate in terms of a process that exemplifies that, namely the due diligence that is necessary from the scientific community, from other organizations that have done their job to make sure that this occurs, and also boards like yourselves that have to review this. So I encourage you to vote on the sustainability of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Camden Ackerman?
Hi, good evening. My name's Camden Ackerman. I live in West Hampton Beach. I'm a resident who's very in favor of this, but tonight I'm here as a representative for the Southampton Business Alliance. I have a letter to read on their behalf. I am writing on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Southampton Business Alliance. We are a business advocacy group currently in our 26th year of working to protect the interests of business, of the business community throughout the township of Southampton. A great deal of our work centers around land use. As business owners, property owners, residents of the township, we all share a collective concern for keeping the delicate balance between environmental protection and new development. As a board, we do not endorse specific projects, and thus we cannot specifically voice support for the Lewis Road PRD. However, in this instance, there is no request for a change of zone, but simply Discovery Land is seeking approval for their as-of-right project. What we can endorse is the fact that this project will create local jobs and provide a clear economic boost of the area. Specifically for East Quogue, the projected homeownership of upper-income second homeowners will provide much-needed tax stabilization for the hamlet without adding to the school district's burden. These seasonal owners will shop locally, use local home service contractors, and provide year-round benefits for the area. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Cheryl Heather, Executive Director.
Thank you. Ann Anthony?
My name is Ann Anthony, and I live in West Hampton Beach and have been a resident of there for over 50 years. And I'd like to thank you for doing your extensive due diligence on this project, and I'm delighted that the application has now been pretty much complete, I hope. Ever since Discovery came to my neighborhood in West Hampton Beach, I've been absolutely impressed by what they have accomplished and how they have preserved our community. In fact, when you drive down Dune Road, you don't even know they're there. And people have worried about the traffic. I hear about it all the time. I live on the road that goes to the beach, and the traffic really has not changed since they've been there. Also, Discovery Land has not come in to try to change our community. In fact, I think they've really enhanced it. They will build a community that everybody in East Quogue will be proud of. They respect the environment, and this has always been their mission. They will frequent local businesses and support them. They will buy local Prados. Their farm-to-table is absolutely their priority. East Quogue should be delighted that this developer has come to our neighborhood and not some other developer who some people think would be cookie cutter. Believe me, they are not cookie cutter. And I strongly support this project, and I urge this board to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. William Kearns? Kevin's Kearns? Kearns?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. I live at 117 Spinney Road. My name is William Kearns in East Quogue. I have been opposed to this project from day one, and surprisingly, no one as yet has called me a NIMBY. But I'm here tonight, I plead guilty. I am a NIMBY. I wish they had done that because I would have been able to explain to them that is my belief, that we do not have the right to destroy and desecrate the pine barrens and the fauna and the flora that inhabit and thrive there irrespective of how much property is not being developed. This project started out, my involvement started out about seven years ago. It started out with 86 homes and a golf course. Now it stands at 130 homes and a golf course. It was rejected by the town board after years of vigilant deliberation, yet we are still here tonight. It is important that we are experiencing, experiencing in East Quogue horrific environmental issues in the areas surrounding this proposed development. The aquifer beneath the homes on my street, Spinney Road, have been shown to have water at twice, two and a half times the acceptable rate of nitrogen, making it undrinkable. Carcinogenic PFOAs from Damascus Road and Gabreski Airport border the property, making that water undrinkable. Two days ago, Newsday reported that eels from creeks south of the project have been shown to contain these carcinogens. They've made it to the creek. That used to be a commercial fishery, by the way. I don't think it is anymore. Eastern Shinnecock Bay has been closed to shell fishing. Dr. Chris Gobler recently reported on the sorry state of Montibogue Bay and Quantuck Bay to the west of us, yet the mayors of Quogue and West Hampton Beach here are here tonight to support this project when their water is polluted. The list goes on. We are surrounded, this project is surrounded by superfund sites. It is important to view the complete picture here, what the total impact of this development and surrounding toxicity will do for the future of the town. It doesn't bode well from my perspective. I do have two questions. In reviewing the video and the final report that your consultant delivered last week, I was alarmed by the lack of clarity relative to the fertigation process. He said that he did not review it. I think it should be reviewed from your side, they've reviewed it, as I do not believe a health hazard should be left in the hands of a non-supervised private company to mitigate. That being said, I also do not believe pollution can be mitigated. It can only be prevented. Secondly, I did some research on golf course fertilizer nitrogen application levels. Purdue University reports that 3.5 pounds per 1,000 square feet is recommended for the optimum green and fairway growth. Yet according to your consultant, they're talking about 2.5 pounds. Tonight, Discovery says they're talking about 2 pounds per 1,000 square feet. I think we should check that out and make sure that, you know, what is real here, because if that in fact is the case, if it is 3.5 pounds, their data, their research would be skewed and it wouldn't be accurate. Thank you very much. Also, one last thing. Mr. DeVere, with all due respect, if you want to be the neighbor that you profess to be, I would start by dropping, I'm sorry.
Press your comments to us.
I would hope that Discovery would drop the $100 million lawsuit that they have lodged against the town. Thank you.
Thank you.[1197.08][1197.08](Applause). Andreas Filka?
Good evening. I'm hoping I can use this?
Sure.
I'm Andreas Filka. I'm president of the Southampton Town Civic Coalition, and the East Quogue Civic is one of my organizations, and they are, they have been and are continuing to be opposed to the project. Your consultants raised several important issues that need to be answered, and I'm hoping that after tonight and through the written comments, you'll be able to really take a look at some of these issues. For me, I've been focused all along on the traffic in the area, and I'm still concerned. The traffic study was done in March 2018. According to the consult, your consultants, they need to redo it during the summer months, again weekday AM and PM peak, as well as Saturday peak. Currently, Lewis Road and 104, as well as Lewis Road and the Foxtree and Old Country Road intersections have really compromised levels of service. It's a real concern for the people in the community. Even Discovery is saying that with their addition of the project, it'll bring it to D-level of service. My feeling is it might even be worse. The consultants pointed out that the trip generation numbers need to be reviewed. I don't have much time, but I will leave this with you. Depending on how, and I will send written comments about different ways that you can take a look at it, it really changes what those numbers will be. One of the things that I think you need to take a look at is the fact that they've added Long Island Railroad trains. I think it's now up to seven a day. I'm still presuming, based on what I'd read previously, that every homeowner will be able to invite three guests to play golf, so there will be some traffic. What I'm wondering, though, is will a homeowner, will a homeowner have to be there for the guests to play, to play the course? In which case, you have even more traffic. Some of those questions really haven't been answered. Same thing with the baseball games. Who will be coming? How many people, how many, who's considered a guest under those circumstances? And again, obviously, how will it be monitored? Very importantly, there is no count at all for the East Coast Mine, which is located over here, and this is the entrance and exit to the East Coast Mine. This is significant, not only with the construction of the hills, which according to what I've read, there'll either be 5,000 to 8,700, 8,700 truckloads of soil that will be removed in order to create the golf course. That amounts to 10,000 to 17,000, over 17,000 truck trips that might be necessary. They're hoping they can go through their own land for some of it, but no matter what, sooner or later, they'll be coming out onto Lewis Road. These numbers, by the way, don't include the trucks entering and leaving the East Coast Mine in general. The bottom line is, you want an accurate predictor of what that traffic will be. It's already horrendous in the area. Just a few other considerations, and I will be quick. Air quality, especially during construction, because you've got the East Quogue School very close by. Ownership. If you have shares in Discovery or any of their facilities, are you an owner? That again will impact the traffic in the area. What about Dune Deck? Are they owners? Should it be site ownership only? What if it's a timeshare or corporate ownership? I've been getting questions from people in the area. Again, you need a clear definition of owner and guest. But I also have concerns about the repercussions from their need to eliminate outside members. This isn't their typical business plan. Will Discovery come back and ask for a variance at a later date? In spite of, and that of course would really impact traffic. The worst-case scenario, though, happened in Brookhaven. I just read in the paper yesterday where the owner of the, what is it, the Heatherwood Golf and Villas is asking the town of Brookhaven to reduce their 18-hole golf course to a nine-hole golf course and build another 200 homes. That's obviously a big concern in terms of the approval for this project. You have to think about the fact that this isn't the way they normally operate, and is there some way to protect, again, protect the people of East Quogue against that? And again, because of its location and the proximity to already impaired Weesa Creek and Shinnecock Bay, everything that happens on this site has to be very carefully evaluated, and I trust that you will do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Cindy McNamara?
Good evening. My name is Cindy McNamara. I am the Chair of the East Quogue CAC. I am here on behalf of the CAC to tell you that this project has our unanimous support. Having said that, I would like to tell you as briefly as possible why that's such a big deal. Two years ago, the Chair of the East Quogue CAC told the town board that the community was against the Hills PDD. She moved out of Southampton Town the day after it was denied. Members of the community, including myself, were upset with the town's decision and vowed to play a more active role in the community organizations in the future in the hopes of being heard. We decided that we would join the East Quogue Civic and the East Quogue CAC. When individuals tried to join the East Quogue Civic, they soon learned that was not possible. The East Quogue Civic is a private corporation, its board is appointed, and their meetings are held in private at undisclosed location at unspecified times. That left the East Quogue CAC as the only community organization we could join and have the ability to have a collective voice in land use issues. Several new members were able to join the East Quogue CAC in January of 2018. We were happy to finally have a seat at the table, but it didn't last long. Shortly after the East Quogue CAC sent letters supporting the Lewis Road PRD to this board, as well as the ZBA, a town board resolution to officially adopt rules forbidding us from taking collective stance on such matters suddenly appeared. None of the CACs were involved in drafting those rules. Thankfully, after receiving pushback from the Watermill and Bridgehampton CACs, the resolution was withdrawn. I am proud to say that the East Quogue CAC currently has the most members it has ever had, and we have noncommittee attendees at every meeting. Our meetings are filled with lively discussion and debate, and we strive to keep the community informed and involved. While we are appreciative of the opportunity to now give this development our support, we are understandably upset that we weren't able to do so when it included so many more benefits for our community. We are still pleased with the amount of open space that will remain, the low impact on our highest tax services, and the much-needed boost to our tax base. The current East Quogue CAC is comprised of realists who understand that something will be built, and the project currently before this board is the one that we all feel would be best. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Alestra?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the town board for their time and patience. I've been a resident of East Quogue for 21 years, and I'd like to redirect our discussion back to something that was mentioned earlier, and the fact that the most precious resource we have is water, I think we'll all agree. I have an article here from the New York Times, Sunday, July 14th, and it's a rather global issue, and I, obviously, I'll spare you, I won't read it all, but let me get my glasses, so that certainly will help. But it says, "A scarcity adds to water's appeal." And again, I'll take a section, I'll make this available to the board, certainly if they like it. "A small group of traditional mutual funds and exchange-traded funds already invest in it, mainly in companies that contribute to the delivery, testing, and cleaning of potable water." And again, third-world countries, obviously, so it's a global look, but obviously important. Then I have one from the Southampton Press, and it says, "Long Island's drinking water has most contaminants in state." And again, "The drinking water on Long Island has by far the most emerging contaminants of any region in the state, according to a review of detections of the substances by the New York Public Interest Research Group. These contaminants include industrial chemicals from spills, wastewater components, and personal care products like shampoo and detergent, and dioxide, obviously has just been identified. The island-state of drinking water contrasts with the supply serving New York City, which gets its water from upstate and has acquired land surrounding the reservoirs protecting the supply. The drinking water on the island comes locally from below ground." Then another article, again, "Testing for water quality contaminants in East Quogue and Quogue." Many of us obviously live there. I certainly do. Many of us, obviously, live there. I certainly do. And again, it, again, identifies the contaminants. Though it's currently unknown whether off-site groundwater down gradient of the eastern area of Grebeski Airport property is contaminated, the private wells, which we know are being supplied by Discovery Land with water. And it goes on to speak about the areas around Grebeski Airport and the Canine Kennel, where there are PFOSs and PFOAs. Again, I'm not a scientist, but certainly some contaminants. Suffolk County, in coordination with the New York State Departments of Environmental Conservation and Health, also planned to conduct additional groundwater monitoring in that area of the airport property. Certainly relatively close. And then finally, even just today, and again, I'm not going to believe in this, we can find this every single day. But again, the, an article in Newsday talking about "Creative reuse of water can preserve our supply." Keeping Long Island's drinking water clean is one challenge. Having enough water is another. So I think the evidence, the science and the evidence certainly points to the fact that water is very important. Now, Discovery wants to build this large, you know, golf course and its adjoining buildings right on the Pine Berrines. The water that is obviously crucial, not only to East Quogue, but Quogue and West Hampton and most of Suffolk County. And to just ignore that seems to be very, very dangerous. The water is clearly compromised, and it continues, we learn on a daily basis, that it appears to be, in some cases, getting worse. And to allow them to build a golf course, now, we've spoken a lot about nitrogen. But I'm not, again, a scientist, nor do I know what goes on a golf course. But I suspect there's more than just fertilizer. There's fungicides and probably all kinds of chemicals that are placed on that golf course to make it, you know, obviously, something very appealing. So I caution, you know, the Board to really examine that and recognize the fact that if the water continues to be compromised, some of the developers and some of the people that think their, perhaps their assets will improve, may very well be mistaken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Brian Babcock.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Brian Babcock. I'm a resident of East Quogue. Pardon my appearance. I came here straight from work to speak to you this evening. I'm not here representing any of the hats that I wear. I am on the, I do attend the CAC meetings. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce in East Quogue. I also am a board member of the East Quogue School Board. This has obviously been discussed over the years. It's a concern for one way or the other. I personally stand here today and say to you, this project has been, the can's been kicked far enough down the, down the road to you guys. We would look for you to approve it, you know, as soon as possible. I did see a few people's heads shake when somebody mentioned that they worked for Discovery. I don't personally work for them, but I find it hard to believe that you would shake your head that they're creating jobs for a local town. It's terrible. I can't believe they do it. But it's, I see a lot of young kids that work there, and it's amazing. Last thing I'll say is, I've been attending a lot of these meetings over the, over the last few years, and I see the numbers that are against this project dwindling. I've actually taken a tally this evening. I have 25 in favor, six opposed. As in the past, during the Town Board meetings, there was a huge amount of people that were opposed to the project. I'm glad to see that they've stayed home, realizing that this project is going to move forward and do the best it can for East Quogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Campsie.
How you doing? My name is Ronnie Campsie. I've lived in East Quogue for 42 years, a long time in my life. Excuse me, I have Parkinson's disease, and my dopamine level is getting low sitting here watching all of you guys shrink.
We'll try to speed it up a little.
Anyway, and my voice, sometimes I don't have control of my voice either. But I'm saying, I believe in this development that's going to take place there. I believe for the people of East Quogue, I've worked there 40 years to try and make a village a village. And it's been a long, hard 40 years. We're a beautiful little village. It's one block long. My business has been there for 41 years. We employ about 22 people. But it's very hard for small towns on Long Island to survive, and East Quogue is one of them. I know we're prospering, but we could use some help with our school taxes and other benefits that they're offering our community. But I heard people crying about the water quality here tonight, so I'd like to step aside here for one second and ask the Town Board, I mean, the Planning Board, if they know anything about the sand pit. The sand pit is right here. Look at that there. That's, that's, they have dump trucks that runs 24 hours a day to New York City because they're selling sands to the city, destroying the road. These trucks are destroying the road. I haven't heard one Dick Ampere, anyone, one time he was at a civic association meeting. And I asked him about the, the sand pit. He said, "What sand pit, Ronnie?" And I said, "One of the next where they want to put the golf course." He said, "I don't know that sand pit." Well, it seems that no one knows that sand pit, but that's the biggest polluter to groundwater because if it rains or anything, they only have about two or three feet to the water level. And so everything runs right straight in there and right down to Weesa Creek. Up here, you're going to have a lot of sand filtration. Down here, you have nothing.
We need for you to speak into the mic, please. Otherwise...
And if they do take the sand... If they do take the sand from the, if the course was approved and they were taking the sand from the golf course, I would ask the Planning Board or the town or someone to say that that sand has to be remained in the sand pit because they're going to have to start restoring something. And that would give them a big blow of sand to put in there to help protect our environment. Thank you, and I hope that you understand that it's the people of East Quogue and Long Island are beautiful people. They all work hard every day to protect our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, for those of you who may not know, Mr. Campsie, I just wanted to acknowledge that among us tonight is a real Vietnam hero, Ronnie. Thank you for your service.
I just had one more thing that I owe my country.
I'm not going to say it again.
I have four diseases from Agent Orange: prostate cancer, COPD, Parkinson's disease. And so I love my country. I'm just scared of my government. Thank you.
Amanda Goldberg.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amanda Goldberg. I am the owner of, well, my family owns Goldberg's Bagels. I personally own Goldberg's Bagels in East Quogue. I am also a resident of East Quogue as of two years ago. I support this project. I always have. Over the years of having the offices right across the street from our store, we've had a lot of coming and going of everybody from Discovery. Actually, I didn't even know it was really Discovery until a couple of days ago because I just know the people of, of Discovery. And they are so open and so wonderful, and all they want to do is make this community thrive. Over the years, I've been in business for four years. My store has been there for, in that specific location for one of, for more than a year, which is really unheard of in East Quogue. I sustain an all-year business. I've only closed once, not knowing what East Quogue was about, but getting to know the community. I'm open all year round, and I would like to keep it that way. I would love to see more people coming and going, and I feel like this project can sustain our busy season for a lot longer than it has been. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Seeliger.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Kathy Seeliger, and I've been a resident and business owner in East Quogue for over 25 years. I'm also treasurer of the East Quogue Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. And I sit on the board of the East Quogue Citizens Advisory Committee. I believe that the Lewis Road PRD makes sense for East Quogue on so many levels. Speaking personally, on my level, speaking as a mom, I've had four children go through the East Quogue West Hampton School District. They've gotten wonderful educations. They're well on their way now to the next level of success in their life. And I, I credit the East Quogue School for that. And I would like to give that benefit to all the other children of East Quogue. I would like to see the level of service continue and even get better in the East Quogue School District. And I feel that having a project that's going to have tax revenue to our schools without taxing our services is kind of a no-brainer. So that's one level. Then I'm going to speak as a business owner. I, again, I've had a business on Main Street for 25 years. I know it can be difficult sometimes to have a Main Street business, especially a small town as, as East Quogue. And we look forward to anything that is going to bring business to East Quogue. We've had Discovery in our, having a storefront for a couple of years now. They've been nothing but a wonderful neighbor, a great addition to East Quogue, and we look forward to them being part of our community. Also, as a business owner, I have to say that I am on Main Street seven days a week. So I feel like I have a pulse of the East Quogue community. And I know there's always some opponents, but the East Quogue community as a whole overwhelmingly supports this project. I'm kind of a sitting duck, sitting in my store every day, so people come in all the time and they ask me what's going on. And people, quite honestly, just cannot believe that this is still going on. Seems to make sense for East Quogue on so many levels. We've already lost all of the community benefits that would have helped our community so much. So we ask you to please, please approve this project going forward. I have one last thing I want to say. I'm not a scientist. I don't have all the answers. But everybody can agree that the waters and the waterways are very polluted. The bay is polluted. There's a lot of problems. A lot of this has been caused by pre-existing conditions, old septic systems that have been placed on the waterfront communities in East Quogue, unregulated use of pesticides, fungicides, herbicides, everything in the waterfront community of East Quogue. However, this is now 2019. There's so much new technology, and I think that we have an extraordinary opportunity to embrace this new technology and to partner with Discovery Land, who has, you know, this, this is what they do. And they're going to create something that is state-of-the-art, that is environmentally correct. And I think that it would be a terrible shame for us not to take them up on this offer and to see just what they can do for East Quogue. I have full faith in them, and I look forward to what they can do in East Quogue, and I hope you can approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Dominic Clark.
Good evening. I have two letters to read for people that weren't able to make it tonight. To the Planning Board, "We strongly support Discovery's proposed development in East Quogue. It is a travesty that it has been delayed so long. Discovery has a history of being good-beged everywhere they build. This project is environmentally responsible and will bring many jobs to the community. There is no reason to delay it any further. Please give it your approval. Signed, Barbara and Edward Callahan." Where they reside at Five Ocean Avenue in Quogue. Next letter I have to read. Dear Planning Board members, due to a scheduling conflict, I am sorry that I cannot attend this important meeting on Wednesday evening. However, I would like to weigh in on the matter of the Discovery project. I have followed the Hills' application from the beginning, and I have been supportive of, supportive of it every version, and every version of it since the onset of the concept of the Hills. Discovery Land Company is the cream of the crop, and like other properties worldwide, they would never build less than the gold standard. While I'm not surprised by the initial pushback from some concerned citizens, I think it is now crystal clear that they are here to stay and eager to do the right thing for the community. I hope you agree, you do agree, and let their fabulous project proceed. Thank you, and I appreciate all the positive things you do on behalf of the town. Signed, Gail Osman Lopata, from Brown Harrison Stevens."
Thank you. Eleanor Cobell.
Good evening. Hi, my, I didn't know I could, I didn't know I had to sign my husband's name, too. This is James Cobell. Hi. I've been going to meetings even before Dune Deck was built, it was proposed. And I feel, to the opposers, I think everybody should go to something called Google and check out Discovery Land because I did that. And I read everything I could about them before I got to really even know who they were. Dune Deck is unbelievable. I'm not going to, I'm going to repeat a little bit. They're great neighbors. They care about the community. They care about the environment. What, how many people here, what do we use on our lawns? My husband and I chose not to do anything to our lawn. We don't fertilize it. We don't treat it. My husband's a beekeeper. We don't spray. We do nothing because we care about the environment ourselves. I'm not a scientist. I've read everything from this entire project over these years. I've been to all the meetings. I really hope that you approve this because they truly care about the community, the people, and the environment that they are in. And they mean what they say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed? Seton Rice?
Hi. Thank you, Chair and Board, for hearing us tonight. My name is Ed Seltnerich, from East Quogue. Born and raised in Brookhaven. When I was smart enough, I got out and got over to Southampton. Been married, living in East Quogue for close to 30 years. My children were raised in East Quogue, who now own their own homes in East Quogue, who are now raising my grandchildren in East Quogue. So I'm here for the past, the current, and the future of East Quogue. It's been six years. You've, you, like they say before, you've kicked this can down the road. You've had every environmental impact there is. I sit here and I listen to the environmental guy say they still haven't reviewed any application. It's been six years. Get someone else. We absolutely are in favor of pushing this forward. This is by far the best scenario for the community. Business is about give and take. You guys did a good job getting the best for the town, best for the community. But you've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxpayers' money to get to this point. It's time. It's time before it costs us a lot more money. Please approve this. Let the building departments and everybody else do their jobs in maintaining and monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Mirren.
Good evening. It's Marino, Michael Marino.
Marino.
I moved to East, I bought a place in East Quogue about nine years ago. We have a, our youngest kid is disabled, and we needed like a vacation spot. So we got lucky. We got a, a little piece of property on the water there, on the north end, a little Weesa Creek. And what amazes me in the springtime every year is I start seeing little fish jumping out of the water. And you see crabs. And you see all different kinds of birds feeding over there, fishing, terns, cranes, blue herons. And if all of that wildlife was to die off one year, I would know why. And that's why, that's why I'm concerned about this. A golf course upstream of that, pesticides on the grass, cannot be a good thing. But I have a question. Where, where does clustering come from? Because I know the zoning is CR200. That means a five-acre lot, one house. Where does clustering come from? How does that come into being?
Through a PRD, through a plan.
Okay, so it's not in place at the moment?
No, that is the application.
That's the application. Okay, so clustering aids development, right?
It's a configuration.
Aids development because it makes the distance for utilities shorter, puts the buildings in one place. That's what it seems to me.
So, so go on.
This is the area here that's going to be developed, right?
Yes.
This area is going to be developed.
Excuse me.
So development...
And conservation are two different things. They're opposites.
Yes.
Okay.
They're different things.
Sir.
Yes.
Clustering means that they have a right to put it on five acres. What they then do is give up four acres. They cannot develop. So if it was five acres, they would have a right...
No, but each and every one of those things exceeds the setbacks.
Oh, no, no.
It's a plan, it's a PRD.
They're built close to your property line. So all the setbacks are just thrown out the window.
No, setbacks are implied.
A five-acre setback has 150-foot front yard.
Is one of these units going to have 150-foot front yard?
Okay, so you have a question. Yes, it's a tool.
Anthony Trezep, Festival Planner for the Town.
Anthony Trezep, supplemental planner for the town. In the subdivision regulations, you have what's called a standard plan, which identifies how many five-acre lots can you get on this property, five-acre lots that conform to zoning. Clustering is a design tool. Clustering is the ability of the planning board to say, hey, you're entitled to X amount of lots under zoning, but we want a certain percentage of land preserved, in this case 65% minimum, which means the 35% that's left over is where you have to put all of your development.
That's a huge concession.
Yes, let me finish though, so I can just answer your question. So by the very nature of that design, lots become smaller, as you're correctly pointing out than what zoning requires, and as a result of that, the planning board applies specific zoning requirements for those, you know, for that project, because they're not able to create lots that conform to zoning because of the clustering.
That's the technical analysis.
Okay, so it's one concession, and then the golf course is another concession.
Well, there's, no, there's a residential component, and then there is a golf course. Okay?
I think at this point I'm against it, because I'm afraid of the pesticides and their effect on the creeks.
Okay. Thanks very much. PJ Mitchell?
Hi, PJ Mitchell, East Quogue resident, retired attorney. And I only say that because I have a question with regard to something that may or may not become a problem. I read somewhere that in the original application, that there was a covenant of seasonability, seasonal occupation, and that that was fine to have that covenant there, but that in this new application, you may not be able to have that same covenant of seasonal occupancy. And that's a concern, so I would just like to point that out, because this development is based on seasonal occupancy, summer-only golf course. And if it were year-round, then the schools would be impacted. I have to tell you quickly, I have been opposed to this project for a very long time. My opposition to the project, of course, are environmental, but also the character of the community. I moved from California, and I desperately wanted a community like East Quogue. I don't want East Quogue to become West Hampton Beach. There are too many golf courses, and there's too much Dune Road, and, which brings me to another point I want to make. I happen to know a few finance people who live on Dune Road seasonally, and they have attended, they attended the Dune Deck opening when they were presenting their property. And my understanding, and please don't yell if I don't have this exactly right, is that it was a million dollars for two weeks in June and two weeks in August. Now, that's, you know, I can't, I wasn't there, I don't know that, but what my whole point with regard to Dune Deck is, I can't imagine that anyone would pay that for a beach club only and not golf. So I have a concern that membership, because of the dual ownership, Dune Deck and the Hills, or whatever it's called now, that golf is going to be coming from Dune Deck in some way, shape, or form. And so I would like to make sure that that's addressed, that issue is addressed, that we don't want, I mean, you have to, you have to understand, someone said this already, that this is not a typical business plan for Discovery Land, to have a private golf course that only services the residents before it was going to be a public golf course. And that, I mean, bottom line is, when you develop something, you do it for money. You don't do it because you want to be a good person for the environment. I mean, yes, I don't dispute that Discovery Land is a great company, but the bottom line is, that they may, may not have the same interest in having a private-only golf course for only the members that live there, seasonally. And so I want to make sure that Dune Deck doesn't, somehow their membership doesn't end up coming to play golf in my town.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Larry Oxman?
Good evening, Larry Oxman. Let me start by saying I am in favor of the PRD, the way it's, the application. I think a lot of very good points have been made, so without having to repeat that, what I can add, I'm a real estate broker. I've been selling real estate in the area of East Quogue, West Hampton, for 40 years, almost 40 years. John, I remember your office, it seems like yesterday, that you were on Main Street. But basically, in my professional opinion, I believe that the Lewis Road PRD will enhance the real property values of East Quogue and the town of Southampton. I think that that's very good. We've heard people talk about how it will help the downtown area of East Quogue, but I think in general it's going to enhance the value. At the same time, this PRD is supplying 12 affordable homes. I have two boys that are 21. I'd like them to be able to afford to live out here. It's very, very tough, I'm sure you know that. So I basically urge the planning board to move forward with this application without delay and without, you know, without any further...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Dallas?
Hi, my name is Robert Dallas. I'm a lifelong resident of Southampton. I have the great fortune of actually working for Discovery. I have three letters, surprisingly, in support of the project for three people who could not be here that are residents of Quogue. First is David and Christina Kepner. "To the members of the Southampton Planning Board, our letter of support will undoubtedly be repetitive of others, because the key, obvious, and overwhelming arguments in support of the Hills have prevailed from the day the project was first proposed to us all. It is now in the hands of the planning board. To end this litany of misjudgment and support a project that offers East Quogue and environs the best impactful development at every level: environmental, density, traffic, school burden, et cetera, et cetera. Moreover, it will strengthen the hamlet and residents fiscally through its own proven track record of local support by creating jobs and by reducing individual tax burden. We urge to support the environment and the citizens of East Quogue and vote green." The second letter is from Randy Cardo of Quogue. "Dear members of the Southampton Town Planning Board, I am not able to attend the meeting tonight, so I am conveying my support of the Hills through this letter. I urge the Town Planning Board to approve the Hills' application as it is in the best interest of our environment and the residents of East Quogue, as well as the local communities. Over the years, the project has been under review. Numerous experts have supported the Hills' development with the least impact on our local environment. The conclusions were supported by many factors, including an onsite sewage treatment system, the filtering and reuse of farm water for irrigation, fertilizer limits, and strict water quality monitoring, none of which would be implemented in a conventional development. Please vote in favor of the Hills." And lastly, this letter is from Austin Patterson Distin, I'm sorry, Stuart Distin. "Members of the planning board, I have been a resident in Quogue for many years and have been watching the process of the Hills' project unfold for several years, and it seems that it basically comes down to a direct black-and-white interpretation of the zoning. It is my opinion that the benefits of this project far outweigh any perceived negatives, and they have been well documented. I trust that you will fulfill your duties and obligation of the board. You've done your due diligence by involving the ZBA and an outside consultant, and now all bases are covered. This should not be a difficult decision. Despite all the people here for and against the application, though it seems like there are more for, your task should be straightforward to follow the letter of the zoning regulations and approve this application. Thank you. Thank you very much."
Thank you. So I've come to the end of the cards. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? We have someone here.
My name is Celeste Frank. I'm from Southampton. I've had my home in Southampton about 12 years, and I know a little bit about this project, and I wanted to pose some questions that perhaps you may want to pose to the developer and the developers' experts. And in regard, I want to say that I'm opposed to the location of this project. I'm opposed to it because of the pine barrens and it being the most precious resource in protecting our water on Long Island. But I don't see in any of the materials that I read, and I'd love for the developer or the experts to answer the question, how many trees are going to be cut down? The number. What maturity are the trees? Are you aware that a tree at 40 years old, now let's just say an average, I'm not going to identify every single pine, you know, type of tree, but on average, if we can say on average, a 40-year-old tree absorbs 45 pounds of CO2 from the air. So my question to the developer is, how are you going to rectify that? Because if we multiply 45 pounds, times the number of trees, that's a lot of CO2. And if you can present your plans on how to rectify that, I think that would be very helpful. Secondly, my last point is that it's also a, there's been a shift in, and Rutgers did a study on this, and I'll be happy to share it, a shift in migratory patterns of birds, and it's due to several things. It's due to like Hurricane Sandy and Irene, and so things are shifting in the environment, and so there may be some more updated studies on things that you might want to look into. But again, I would love to know how the developer will be rectifying the CO2 times the amount of trees. Thank you very much.
Can you please fill out a card, so that we have a record?
Hello. I've been out in the hallway listening on live coverage from my phone in a popcorn bowl that was working pretty well at the town council's office, so I have been hearing everything that's been going down, even though I'm just arriving in the room now.
We have your name, please, some sort.
Elizabeth Jackson, from East Quogue. In all that I was listening to, we've been to all these meetings, we knew that it's been discussed, but it hasn't been discussed as per this being, this application here tonight. I did go online and appreciated the stuff that the town helped post, so I can look and see what the application currently said. I know that I must have to come in and try to get some more detailed stuff, because you can't put all these big files online. So what I focused in reviewing was the stuff that I could get off of that link. One thing that has, as I've been listening and concerning, or one thing I was chuckling about this morning when I was reading through the stuff, was that you have 118 dwellings on this property. Those are supposed to be the only 118 families with their friends that are able to access any of these amenities. It's not a huge area. It's supposed to be clustered somewhat. It's a gated community, private, where no one can get inside of. And meanwhile, they have on the plan, not only the golf course, but now they have the clubhouse, which has an underground parking garage. They have an entire building for showers, for lockers to lock up their belongings while they're doing their outdoor pursuits, changing rooms, there's a dining room, there's a kitchen, all in the clubhouse. What are they using their houses for? They have swimming pools, they have pool houses, they have the pond that doesn't exist that they're going to be creating for pond pursuits, is going to have equipment available for paddle boarding, kayaking. Like, that's a significant body of water, if you're going to have your people doing that. When people were talking about whether others were coming in, the only thing that kind of made sense was maybe that was the missing piece, where if you did own a house somewhere in the area, and you had money in Dune Deck, or you had a property, you know, related to Discovery, that if you were to come that day to go golfing, I could see where you would need a shower, and I could see where you would need potentially dining space, or changing areas, or places to lock up your valuables. I cannot see why a 100,000-square-foot space is required for those amenities when you have a lavish community of houses behind you. Other things that I'm really looking forward to seeing eventually that's going to be the most important is going to be the actual ways that they are accounting for open space, because every map that I've seen involves little bits and pieces here that's all accumulating. They also now are recording that they wanted their roads to be narrower than normally typical for the country experience, and this and that, the other. If a road gets narrow, you can even see on our East Quogue roads now, if you have cars parked on both sides, ambulance is barely getting through. So do consider things that are not just sounding good. If they're reducing the size of the road in order to get more square footage to count towards development, that might be another thing to kind of keep a close eye on. I'm also just concerned about discontinuing the fact that the preservation isn't all in one spot, and the development has become so immense compared to the original plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, do, just another card. Yes? Your name?
Yes, hi, my name is Jim Ryer, resident of Quogue. I've served as the chairman of the Design Review Board in Quogue, vice president of the Quogue Association, trustee of the Shitikak Yacht Club. I think what Discovery wants to do here, shown that they've collaborated, they've compromised, and they persevered, and people don't persevere unless what they know they're doing is a positive effect, so I urge you to move this application forward.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Larissa Patapshug, and I'm a North Sea. I'm prompted to come up here from a young woman who had identified we should Google Discovery to see how wonderful they are. Well, it's interesting, because they do have some violations, and just in the last 20 minutes, in 2002, in Santa Clara County, they had violations on land use permits, and the town, that county was identifying whether they should revoke this. They had failed to carry out allegedly, according to this article, a host of environmental protections that they were promised. There were local concerns that they did not honor their commitments for golf club and golf course use. So we're in Southampton, and we have lovely facilities and great people and all wonderful intentions, but we're a little bit weak on code violations and how to follow up. Please consider if you would even move forward in this, monitoring, protecting, and ensuring that there is a solution and an alternative if their promises are not met. And the fact that they're willing to sue people, sue their townspeople, sue the board, our town board, because they didn't like an outcome. I think we need to really look into what are the ramifications, and what could this mean if, when you Google and do the research, they might not be the great neighbor we all purport them to be? Thank you.
Can you just take a card, Larissa, and follow with you? Is there anyone else? Please, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay. Wayne, do you need to, would you want to just wrap something up?
On behalf of the applicant, we, and the board, thank you for your patience. This process, as you've been through it several times with not only this project but other projects, we expect that the board will continue their diligence in reviewing this application. We, at this point, I believe that anybody who's had notice and has asked for an opportunity to be heard has been heard. Certainly, it has been your practice to close the hearing and keep the written record open for 30 days thereafter, and we would like to be able to review any of those written comments and provide the board with answers to questions, even questions the board may have, or the staff.
Right. Well, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming tonight. Great participation. You can submit your letters digitally or in paper to us through the planning department, and that would be greatly appreciated. We have had requests of people who could not come, who would really like to have some testimony, so we're going to recommend, Wayne, just a couple of weeks' adjournment until August 8th, is that?
7th.
7th? Whatever that date is.
8? I think we should reconsider.
Right, no. So, thank you.
Are those requests that you received in writing?
We have had requests of people who are away, because it's the middle of summer.
In writing? No, they've made the requests in writing? I didn't see anything of that sort in the file that...
Well, we've had some, Wayne, so we want to extend it and give people an opportunity to come and speak on August 8th, which is the next public hearing.
So would the hearing be limited to those people that didn't speak? Or are we going to go through the same thing?
Well, or anybody else who wants to speak. I mean, it's a public hearing.
I understand, but I mean, are we going to do and hear everybody that just spoke? I understand. But I mean, are we gonna do and hear everybody that just spoke again tonight? Again?
No, they're on the record. No, they're on the record.
I understand.
Yeah, and we've got all that.
Just continuing the hearing, are you going to keep it open for those people? And all these people, I just want to know that they all should come back again and repeat themselves.
No, we have their, they're free to, but we have their records, we have their letters. Please send them in. They were well appreciated. So I'd like to... August 8th. Sent to the planning department. Yeah, to the planning department. All of them. Support, yes or no, whatever. We'd appreciate that.
If we read all the letters you sent.
Extending to 30 days, which would get us to August 8th.
August 8th.
I don't think it's necessary.
We've discussed it. Okay. All right, John, I don't want to have a discussion. Well, you can, if you want to, you know, but we have your documents. And we have your record and everything's been recorded, so we appreciate that. Really do. It's been great participation. So this was a special hearing and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn till August 8th.
Motion.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor?
That's in the evening.
I oppose it.
Yes, it's a regular, it'll be a regular session. Regular session.
Date and time.
Not a special. Regular evening time. Yeah, 6 o'clock. Okay, so...
What was the vote on that?
I oppose.
Rolling out.
So one, two, so...
Jackie, I oppose.
Okay, one opposed, one absent.
We've had a...
Five in favor?
Full house.
I think I would be opposed to it also.
Two opposed, four in favor. The motion passes. August 8th. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Here, if you want these in. There were 40... I had 41.
So there's a couple of...
Hit the gavel. Hit the gavel.